So I'm back again. And I am cooking again for my parents and I'm very excited because this is the first time I'm making focaccia bread. So focaccia, I'm making focaccia. The oven is preheating to 450 currently. I have already made the focaccia bread. It rose for 24 hours. And then I put it into this dish. And I let it rise again. And so the focaccia is ready. And I love focaccia bread. I'm also making twice baked french fries or potatoes, as well as a black bean burger for me and my sister. So here we go. Now, if you were on my live the other day, you do know that I made some lovely caramelized onions. So I'm gonna use these caramelized onions in my focaccia. Once again, I've already made the focaccia bread. 5 cups of white flour, olive oil, salt, honey, yeast. I let it rise 24 hours. This morning, I put it into this pan. And it's nice and jiggly and ready to go into the oven. So I am ready. Thank you for liking and please share the live. I'm ready to do the best part. So I will show you because everyone loves when you get to dimple the focaccia bread. I've already washed my hands. I'm a big person of washing your hands before you cook because some of y'all don't. You better wash your hands before you get into the kitchen. And I'm going to drizzle lots of olive oil on the top of the focaccia bread. And then with my garlic confit, which I made, I'm gonna put in the garlic confit into the focaccia, as well as my caramelized onions. So these will be in the focaccia bread. So here we go. I'm going to change this so you can actually see how I... Let's see, I don't know if it will stay. Will it stay? We'll make it stay. Okay, so this is the best part. I think I'm doing it right. This is my first time. Oh gosh, it gets all over my head. And it's getting everywhere. However, I'm making focaccia. So I've already proofed it. It's already risen. So now you just get to dimple the bread and put tons of olive oil, which I will show you again. And it's been about a two-day process. So now comes... Yeah, you were correct. You were correct. So lots of olive oil. The more, the better. And I actually take my garlic confit. Exactly, William Baker. Exactly. And that's why I show up so happy because I eat great food. And again, I'm cooking for my parents. Dewey, that's what's up, Bowie, that's what's up. Yes, I'm dyeing it again pink tomorrow. So I made some garlic confit. And I'm actually just going to stick it like all the way down. So as it cooks, the garlic confit is deep within the bread as it cooks. And I will have some delicious garlic and caramelized onion focaccia. So I am dimpling and putting the garlic confit deep into the dimpled areas where I had already dimpled the focaccia dough. And then I will sprinkle the rest of the garlic oil on top. And I have my caramelized onions. I have this caramelized onion. Yeah, similar. It just has a longer proofing time. Focaccia has a pretty long preparation time. And it's supposed to be all jiggly and well hydrated. So my caramelized onions have been in the fridge. But I'm going to do the same thing with the caramelized onions and push them to the bottom. And then I'll sprinkle some on top along with some nice flaky sea salt. And throw this in the oven. And I'm going to use this as the bread for... I'm going to make like a black bean burger for myself. But I like it to be really flavorful. So I'm pushing these caramelized onions towards the bottom. And then I will just add some on top for a nice savory focaccia. What's up, Sherri? Um, no. Well, there's ciabatta. Yeah, ciabatta bread is almost like a regular white loaf. Focaccia has a higher hydration. And it just takes a little bit longer. It's really like a two-day process. So I'm finishing off the top of the bread. And I will show you with a lot of the caramelized onions. So there's the garlic confit. Yeah, no, you didn't miss it. I did it yesterday. I did it yesterday. You're just seeing the part where I'm putting it in the oven because it does take a while. So now we have it look like this. And I'm going to take some flaky sea salt and just sprinkle it all over. And I typically put a little extra olive oil because that keeps it nice and soft. And then we're going to get on to my french fries that I'm making for my dad. So this is the finished product. That is the finished product. I've put tons of olive oil. And I'm really excited about this because I am... This is my first time. And I love making bread. So I have my oven, which is already at 450 degrees. It's preheated. And it's time for this beautiful... I don't know. Bowie, I think it's about 40 minutes to an hour. But I just check. Once it's nice and brown and crispy, I'll pull it out. Thank you for liking the live. However, I don't pay attention to that. I know how to make it. And so that's what I'm going to do. So it is done. It is pierced. There's the caramelized onions, olive oil, garlic confit. And it is now going into the oven. Okay, now for my next part, I'm making some french fries. My dad really wanted a hamburger. So I like to not smoke out the house because it feels like there's a lot of smoke right now. I love a nice potato that's crispy. So these french fries are cooked a few different times. First, I just have regular roasted potatoes. And I'll set this up so you can see me work. Oh, it's probably because of my internet connection, Sherri. Oftentimes, it may... You just have to catch up. Okay. Where is the beater? So I will peel the potatoes and core them. I will slice them a bit thicker because I love a nice potato that has a lot of bite. Like not a shoestring potato. Thank you, Sherri, for the roses. I like a potato that has like some toothiness to it. So after peeling the potato, I will boil the potatoes for about 10 minutes. Bring them out because this softens them. And then I will fry them at about 400 degrees. And then I will take them out. And then I will fry them again at a slightly higher temperature. And this allows the potato or the fry to be nice and soft in the middle, but really crispy on the outside. So as you see, I will just peel the potatoes. And I'll show you how I cut them because I like them very uniform. And you can use any potato. Roasted potatoes are always great for a fry. Thank you, Sherri, for the gift. And after I get these going, I'm going to make a black bean burger for me and my sister. I'm going to use black beans, some chickpeas. Very simple. I'm going to use some of my caramelized onions in my black bean burger recipe. A little flour. You can use oats or oats flour. This helps to keep it together and adds to a really rich, dynamic patty. Because although I am not a meat eater, I just want it to taste good. I need it to taste good. And oftentimes, I find that there's individuals that make meatless items that don't taste good. I don't want it. It needs to taste good. Capisce? So that's what we will be finishing up with. And I think by the end of all this, you will be able to see how the focaccia comes out, as well as the fries. And I think that's all I'm going to do. I may saute an onion because I love onions. I love the different things you can make with onions. I love a caramelized onion. I love a sauteed onion. And I'm just peeling my potatoes. I love the beauty of what onions bring to a dish. And if you have a sauteed onion, it changes the flavor. It's a lot better than just the raw onion being on your burger. There's nothing better than a nice... Well, thank you. I appreciate that, Kat. Than a nice sauteed onion. Or a caramelized onion for me. You will hear me speak of caramelized onions often because they are like life's little treat. Yes, they are dreamy and they're so easy to make. They just take time. So with my fries, I like them to be relatively uniform. Sometimes I leave... Yes, and they're so sweet. They're so delicious, Kat. They're great on sandwiches. They're great on everything. So I do like a potato to have like a uniform shape. I don't. I don't. I just use, Bowie, I just let it cook. Now they take time. Sometimes they can take upwards of two hours. And I'm okay with that. So with the potatoes, I need a bowl. Where are all of the... I'm gonna use this. Oh, I'm also trying something else. I'm gonna freeze these peaches because I've been seeing the frozen grated fruit. And I'm gonna try that. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, you can use any type of onion. And you don't have to add the sugar. So I cut off both ends of the potato like this because I want the fries to be uniform. So after I cut the potatoes, I cut the ends of the potato off. I like to just cut them into fours, similar to this. And then uniformly make a nice fry that is pretty uniform. So my fries are like this. All of them. And I soak them in water because that takes out some of the starch. Okay. That takes out the starch, which ensures a nice crispy fry. So if I see that they're too thick... Okay, Bowie, I don't know anything with time. I just keep an eye on it. I will learn in this process. But oftentimes, I don't know the exact cook times. I'm just watching it. I don't, I don't know. I know I can watch it. I could season it. I know what it's supposed to look like. But I don't know the times, girl. I don't know the times. I just throw them in there till they brown, okay? And I also use the ends of the potatoes. And I just cut them like this as almost like extra morsels of potatoes. Thank you, Andre. That's wonderful. What'd they say? Tell me what your friend said about me. So again, I half the potato after cutting off the ends. And then I half it again. So I quarter all of the potatoes. Basically, I cut it into four pieces. Thank you. Boom. So again, cutting off the ends of the potato ensures that you have a pretty uniform fry, such as this. They're all pretty much the same shape. And I am free. Are you my moderator? I know you're always in here and I'm counting on you, girl. Because they coming. What's up? What's up? Am I doing... I will be in LA next month. I have family in LA. My father is actually from LA. Who's at the door? Hold on.
Oh, hi. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hi, how you feel today?
Fantastic. I'm on live right now. So what kind... It's just a normal roasted potato. So this is my sister who got in the frame. You want a doorbell? Well, you could just buy a doorbell, girl. Yeah, it is very cute. It's family time. So everyone comes to the family's house around this time to eat. There's five of us. I have four sisters. That's my oldest sister. So I will show you. All of my potatoes are essentially looking like this. And I soak them in water. This takes off the starch to make sure they're really crispy. So I will do the same with this potato. It's what's beautiful. All the sisters, yes. They're all right. So I cut off both sides of the potato. I'm doing like five things at once. Oh, well, thank you. That's cute. I'll let them know. Cut off both sides of the potatoes so you have a very uniform shape to your fries. This will ensure that they cook evenly and that you have that nice crispy fry. And again, I've cut it in half. Yeah, I have to make, do more with how I make bread because I make bread once a week. I make everything. I make everything, really. I, most of what I eat, I just make. And my mom, who's lying down waiting for the meal to be prepared, used to make everything. So this is kind of like a continuation of what I saw as a child. And I love cooking, especially for my family. Typically, it's just me when I'm in Hawaii at home. However, since I'm with my parents and again, nice fries, put them into water, let that starch cook out of it or let the starch be soaked out. Because the starch in a potato will ensure that your potato will not be crispy. Oh, okay. Which island in Hawaii? Okay. So we have nice, uniform fries. Oh, that's okay. Sometimes I enjoy... I always enjoy my alone time after being raised in a large family. After, I, I can appreciate both. My time with myself, as well as my time with my family. Oh, on Kona, I love the big island. I went... This is a vintage Maui shirt. I live on Maui. And I went skydiving on Kona. What's up, North Carolina? I have a sister there too. Exactly. And all it takes is just a little extra preparation. Cut off the ends. And then you quarter your potato. It makes such a difference. And it makes a difference in how they're cooked as well. And I have to make sure there's enough because these fries are tasty and delicious. And we like to eat, okay? Yeah, now you know. And knowing is half the battle. So again, as I'm cutting the potatoes, I'm talking you through every step. I am placing them in cold water to soak out the starch. And then I already have some salted boiled water that I will boil them in quickly. Maybe 10 minutes just to soften them up. And then I take them out. You let them rest. You dry them and you fry them twice. So it does take some time. However, that's all we have. This is why I don't know the concept of time because I just do what I want. And in the time that it takes. So perfectly cut fries. So easy. Exact... Well, they're not really blanched because blanch would be like to cook and then cool. So technically, yeah, you could be... That's correct. I put them in water, okay? See, some of these terms, it's all about the finished product. So then, this is my last potato. Thank you. I, uh, okay. Okay, DJ Bounce, sure. Last potato. You just cut off the ends like so. And then I cut it in half. And then I cut that again. So I actually have these slices. Like this. Okay, so it's three. And now I will go and slice again. What a bite. I like that. I like that. Maybe I am. I don't, I take that as a compliment. I am always positive. If you see, I am grateful that I had a loving family and a great foundation. So I know what's important to me. Anything outside of what I deem important or valuable, I don't even pay attention to. So if it's something that isn't on my wavelength, my response is, okay. Let me... I think I have a mod, but I will check. I'm really concentrating on my fries right now, Brittany. But hold tight. I will see if that is available for you. So all of the fries are now soaked in the water. And I'm showing you how nice... See, I like a good steak frite, like in Paris. J'ai pas les français. So in France, a fry, in français, is steak frite. Like a steak fry. It's a bit thicker and it has a bit more bite to it. And I like that. Exactly. And if you mess up on a fry, you are no friend of mine, okay? I only want a delicious, crispy fry. Exactly. Pomme frite, a pomme frite. I love my... Je dois le... Je dois pomme frite avec mayonnaise or ketchup. Or avec like a garlic aioli. So let's finish this up to get on to my famous black bean burger recipe. And as I said, yes, this all contributes to... Ah oui! Okay, parlez français avec moi parce que je... Je oubliais le langue. Parce que je ne parle pas tous les jours. Alors, j'espère avec mes amis. So there we go. We had our language lesson and we are going on. Oui, maintenant? Oui, André? Parlez français aussi? I love French. And my love of French came from my great-grandmother on my father's side. She was créole from Louisiana. And so I would always hear her say, "Give me my chapeau." Or she would say certain things in French or créole because that was her first language. And it just intrigued me as a child and stuck with me. And so I took French in school. And I really had a passion for the language. So, well, she spoke a type of créole. It was kind of, it wasn't really patois. Technically, it would be patois because patois is just a combination of native tongue and French and whatever is also added into that person's language from their specific area. Yeah, so I took French and I had a passion to learn it. So once I left school, I would continue to listen to French. I would continue to read French. And then I had a French partner for several years. And that was wonderful because that's really how I learned. And I also lived in Paris. And I used to travel extensively to French-speaking countries in West Africa, which allowed me to not only hear the breaks in the words because oftentimes, especially Parisian French, is quite fast. It's almost like how a Californian would speak compared to someone from Kentucky. Typically, in the South, the cadence of language that is spoken is a little bit slower. However, when I was in Senegal or Mali or Cote d'Ivoire or any of these countries, it is a slower pace. So I could hear. And people enjoyed practicing with me because it's not too often, especially in certain African countries, that you're able to practice with a native English speaker. Yeah, yeah, me too. Me too. Portugais, espagnol, as well as probably Italian because they all fall under the same boat. So I've soaked my potatoes. I'm gonna show you after I take them out of the water. Right, so I've soaked my potatoes. I have drained off the water. And now I'm going to boil them quickly just to soften. just to soften them up in salted water. So, you take the potatoes that have been soaking. I should have got a bigger pot, because my mom has everything. However, we'll do them in small batches. So I'm taking a few handfuls, putting them in the water to boil for about 10 minutes-ish. Now, while that's boiling, now I'm gonna make my veggie patty. So how I make my veggie burger is like this. I'm telling you, my mom has the best stocked kitchen ever. So, I'm going to use black beans and chickpeas, pan-cold breadcrumbs. Let me take out everything I need. So the first thing I will do, this is just some black beans. Good evening, Meg, I'm here cooking again, nice to see you. Uh, cooking for the parents, the focaccia bread is in the oven. Some of the fries are already boiling. And now I'm on to making my own veggie patty, because a lot of veggie patties don't taste very good. And I don't like it. So I know what I want it to taste like and I can just create it. Ooh, cinnamon rolls, that's lovely. Okay, okay, I ain't mad at you at all. So, I will cut open these black beans and rinse them. And I'm also using chickpeas. So I will open a can of chickpeas and I'm rinsing them. Thank you, Meg, for liking and sharing the live, as you always do. Okay. Right. So I've rinsed both of the beans. So, I have black beans and chickpeas in a bowl. Let me get the masher. What I will do now is just, I always have my good. I love chickpea flour, yes, yes, yes. I use all sorts of flours. In fact, I may just make oatmeal flour very quickly, because I have oatmeal. But I like oatmeal flour, because it helps with texture, and I always add that to my veggie patties. So yes, I've used chickpea flour. What's up, Joy for Life? How you doing? How you doing? So chickpeas and black beans. Always a good amount of kosher salt, because beans do need salt and seasoning. Also, a good grab of, thank you, I am prêt, I love that, look at all these gifts. Black pepper, and I'm just gonna mash this. So I mashed the beans just a little before I add my other ingredients. So I will also add a little bit of flour. I usually add a little bit of cornstarch. I'm going to add some of the caramelized onions to the black bean patty, as well as other seasonings. But salt and pepper, I do at every part of cooking. And speaking of that, let me see, the fries are still just softening up. All is always well. I'm here with my family, I'm happy, I'm healthy, I'm feeling good. So, yes, all is well, all is well. So I've mashed them kind of coarsely and I will grab the other seasonings. So we'll do a little, let's see. Garlic powder, onion powder. And always a lot of everything, okay? So garlic powder, onion powder, I use, let's see, what else? Okay, so, to this. Again, I seasoned this before, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I got this on Etsy, because you know, I'm big into my vintage, I love my vintage. And I'm a Mauian, so, thank you, wow, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and these, I got actually here in California, because if I'm wearing denim, it has to be vintage Levi's, or it doesn't work. So, as I'm explaining to you, I'm mashing it, and the chickpeas kind of stay in their shape, which is good. I like that texture. And now I'm going to add, this is kind of one of my secret ingredients, liquid smoke. I like that smoky flavor. I like a little smokiness to my veggie patties. So I add a little bit of liquid smoke. You can never get too much liquid smoke. Onion powder, a ton of it, like I put a lot of seasoning into everything. As you should, because if you under-season your food, I will walk out mid-bite. Learn that more is always better than less, especially with onion and garlic. So I just put in the onion powder. I'm going to add, yes, you gotta have the seasoning, some garlic powder. Hi, Mom. Mom, you can walk past, bread's in the oven, I'm about to do Dad's fries. Can you tell, show me where the patties are?
I'm doing his patty.
Okay, well, she's doing his patty, she won't let me do the patties.
It's nothing to do, put salt and pepper on them, I put them inside.
Okay, okay, well, you go ahead and do that, girl. So, I have added salt, pepper, liquid smoke, olive, olive powder. There ain't no such thing as olive powder. Listen to her, garlic powder, onion powder. And I do taste it as I'm doing it. But I've mashed it, what's up, Jessica? Nice to see you, nice to see you. I'm here cooking, so you came at the right time. So you see that? I will add, let me taste. It tastes great. I always will add just a little bit more pepper and a red pepper flake, because why not? What's up, Divine Spirit God? You on camera, Mom? A red pepper flake is always, okay. Anyone who's been in my lives before, can anyone answer Prince Ashbell? Okay, I just put some red pepper flakes. Now, girl, we gotta share. You can come over here. Here.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, nah, I'm just eating good food. I don't like to be limited. So the moment I, um, say I'm vegan, it limits me. So I eat great food, predominantly plant-based. However, if I'm on a beautiful beach in the south of Italy and someone gives me a margherita pizza, I'm going to eat it. So I don't adhere to any of these dietary restrictions. I eat great food. I do look like my mom. She's a beautiful woman, aren't you, Mom?
Well, if you say so, girl.
So, this is, there she goes. This is just garlic powder I've added to the black beans and the chickpeas, garlic powder, onion powder, liquid smoke, salt, pepper. Now I'm gonna add some panko, panko breadcrumbs, because this helps keep it together. What is that?
Are the fries done?
No. As soon as his patty is done, they will be done, Mom. You just let me know, girl.
I'm gonna put the patty in.
Put the patty in now. You ain't gonna mess up my timeframe. You ain't gonna mess up my timeframe, you see? What's the pizza? Ain't no pizza. You missed that, that was last time. Okay, so I added the panko. This is a burger for me and my sister. My parents or my dad is having a beef burger. However, I am, um, having, exactly, uh, Mac, uh, a black bean burger that I'm making. And you can add anything. You could add frozen vegetables, like those mixed frozen vegetables, into your veggie burger patty. That is delicious. Yes, a margherita, that's like in the south of Italy, anywhere in Italy. I love the cheese, especially abroad, so no, am I a vegan? You get to label me. I'm just Hope. I'm just Hope. You can call me crazy if you want to, it's a good type of crazy. No one says Hope, she crazy, they say Hope. Yeah, she crazy, I like her. That's what they say, okay? So, the, no, 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 no. I said if I'm in the south of Italy, or anywhere in Italy, and I love a margherita pizza, I'm going to have it. It's not a liquor pizza, it's just a simple pizza with fresh mozzarella, basil, and tomato sauce. And this is in reference to someone asking if I'm vegan. I am none of these labels. I am just Hope. I'm just Hope. I just eat great food, okay? I don't, don't, just watch me, just watch me, okay?
Watch me, ooh, watch me, ooh, watch me.
Yeah, that's my sister in the background, there's a lot going on. I add oats to the black bean patty. And then, yes, great food. Let me check. These can be taken off.
Did you just blanch them?
Well, they're not. Blanch would be, you cook them and then you chill them. This just softens them and then I fry them twice. And they're extra crispy and soft in the middle. So a little bit more breadcrumbs, and this keeps the whole burger together. At this point, you could add vegetable broth. You could, yes, lentil mushroom patty, mm. There we go, thank you, thank you, I am prêt, thank you, thank you. But it's, it's a simple pizza, it's just mozzarella, basil, and tomato sauce. So, I've added a bit more of the panko breadcrumbs, just to ensure that it stays together. Oftentimes, they won't stick together. I like to ensure that my black bean burgers stick together. Thank you for the cap, thank you, thank you. And what I will do is I will sear these on both sides and then I put them in the oven to continue cooking. I love the nice crisp outside. And to ensure that it, when I freeze them and they will stick together, I bake them. So, the fries have softened up a little bit. Smoking up in here. I will start my first cook of the fries now. So the sauce, I already have a chipotle mayo. However, I have some caramelized onions leftover, so I may make a caramelized onion aioli with... Let me think about that. Yes, yes, aioli is great regardless of what you put in it, so I'm all for the aioli. Long live the aioli. Okay, let me get the pan for the fries. Yes, yes, Mom, I'm listening.
Can I put my fish in there?
Yeah, absolutely. If you, if you wanna season. And if you want to season them, you can leave them out and I will do the rest. I saw it, I saw it, girl. Now I know, do you have the temperature gauge for like the candy temperature?
Should be in there. Do you see it?
No, I'll find it.
That's it, it's right there.
Where? Tell me. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I'm turning it on.
Yes. Okay, I know, your baby needs to see her baby referring to my father. And what about, it has to be timed out, Mom.
Right, and that's why I was asking.
Okay.
Are they, when, will they be ready? Because this air fryer fixes this meat within five, 10 minutes.
Okay, well, five, 10 minutes, it'll be good to go. So, to this, what kind of fit, exactly. Well, I'm not on the island, I'm in California currently, so, with my parents. So typically, uh, I would have like opaca paca, but I don't know what my mom has. She has some white fish and some shrimp. It's caught. I'm going to add now the caramelized onions to the veggie burger patty to give that sweetness, that savory, yeah. Hold on, let me take some of this butter. All right, so I've added into this. Yes, Bo, I'll make you a plate. You gotta have a plate. The oil is heating up for the fry.
Tastes good.
Thank you. Oh, wow, focaccia looks great.
Is it blueberries?
No, those are caramelized onions.
They look black.
I don't care.
But they are very delicious. Did you put butter in it?
No, olive oil.
Garlic?
Yeah, garlic confit. This is, this is as good as it gets, baby. So, look at the focaccia. It came out absolutely spectacular and it's burning my fingers. Turn off that, it's burning my fingers all the way up. Okay.
Burning my fingers.
Burning my fingers. Yeah, it's nice, that's great. So, I'll show you again, but I'm not gonna burn off my fingers, be honest.
Okay, Hope, you said.
Okay, because I'm gonna put my veggie burger in that. All right, we'll let that cool off, that's off. All right, there we go. So, bread is done. I guess it was less than an hour. I don't know if it's, it looks done, it looks done to me. Fries are about to go in. And then I'm going to, actually, I'm gonna leave this oven on so I can put the veggie burgers in the oven to cook after I sear them on both sides.
Lucia?
Mm-hmm.
Honey, this is gloves where you can pick and you won't burn your fingers off.
Thank you, girl. It's a bit too late for that. Yeah, this... This is going to be delicious. And I'm gonna add... It's salty enough, maybe a little. I want something smoky. Chipotle? Does Sam have some of those Chipotle peppers?
What are you looking for here?
Chipotle. Okay. All right. That's good enough. They taste good. They taste good enough and they're sticking around. Sometimes I put a little flour to ensure. It does, doesn't it, Sherri? I'm so excited about my focaccia. It's taken two days, two days to make this focaccia. Two days. Okay? Oh, you know what's a nice little addition? A little ground mustard. A little ground mustard in a patty. There goes, mom. You're seeing it. Adds a slight bite, which I like. Okay. So... I test the temperature of the oil because it has to be a certain temperature for it to maintain its crispness. I'm doing the fries right now, mom. You're not on, the phone is here. No one will see you.
I don't wanna be a movie star.
So I like it at about... Yeah, about 350, 375 is a good deep fry. And that will ensure, right when you put them in, that crispness will come. Yes. Okay. You're welcome. Okay, I'm back. All right. I've, I've remembered that, mom. I haven't forgotten about it. Got a lot of moving parts right now. Okay. So, I'm just testing the temperature of the oil. It's getting very, very hot, as it should. It seems like Priscilla's sticking around to make sure she can eat. My sister is here. They, do you, yes, they do. I don't even need to ask. They do, they do, they do. That's why I come home. So I have, I told you, my mom has the best stock kitchen. Has all of the thermometers. So I'm gonna throw these in at about... Yeah, 350. Cause that's a good deep fry for about seven minutes. And then I'm going to take them out and then I'll put them back in at 400. She has everything. Do you see everything? And I love it. And you can also just test how it's going to fry by using one end exactly. One end of the fry. That's what you want. Mom, where is the fry thing? The splatter guard?
It's right here by the, uh, right here.
Thank you. I do my fries in small batches. So, you put them in, allow them enough space. Look, yes. Oh, no, I'm not deep frying. Girl, you gotta catch up, Sherri. I'm doing the fries. I ain't deep frying the burger.
It should air fry it though. It would've been just as quick.
I... It's not about quick for me. It's not about the time. However, I know exactly what I'm doing. Please and thank you.
Do you?
I do. Okay. Hi, Naj, I'll call you. Love you. No, that's okay, that's okay. Oh, that's okay. I see, Sherri.
She told me to get out her life.
Exactly, get out my life. Get out my life. This is my life, okay? So, these are the technically thrice baked fries, french fries. So, we soaked them in water to ensure that I pulled out a lot of the starch. Then, I boiled them for about 10 minutes to ensure that they softened up. The first cook is about 350, 375. And they'll get a little brown. And once they start browning up and I leave them enough space, I will show you. Okay. So they look like this currently. Then I will take them out and let them rest. Ah, yes. Yes, of course. Yes. Paris, yes. Yes, all things Paris, yes. So... I will set them on a paper towel on a plate right next to me. I sure am. Thank you. And we will let them kind of rest. And I will start a new batch and just continuously keep this fry thing going, okay? So this is about the time that I take them out. Uh, we have some french fries going. I have my veggie burgers, which I will sear. I'm putting them in the oven. The focaccia bread is already done. And, and your fish. My mom wants some fish. So... Just put them on. Oh, and they'll taste even better. And I'm showing everyone this to say, you can do this. It's very simple. And the moment that you learn to make delicious food for yourself, you will understand that most of these whippersnappers is feeding you terrible food anyway. Make it your way. And when you make it, make it with love, okay? So, this is the first fry. And I will show you because they're such a beautiful golden color. And by taking them out, I will allow time for the oil to heat back up because you want a nice hot oil to allow that crisp nature of the fry. Because you don't wanna be giving no one no soggy fries. What kind of person does that? So, this is the first fry. Why do you have my gla-? They look cute on you. Don't give me no soggy, non-salted fry. I don't play that. That is the first fry. As they rest, I will add the second batch. And so it's continuously a batch of fresh hot fries. I'm so happy my mother has this splatter guard because you don't wanna get hit with no hot grease. That's, that's definite. Okay. So this is the first fry. Let's see if I can get a nice... And then, once we put them in again, they will get extra crispy and delicious. And that, when they're hot, salt them and they're done. All right. So what has everyone eaten tonight? Where's my thing? Where's my, I know I just had it. Greek, lovely. You don't know? Well, you have some ideas. Let me get my... I don't often eat maybe soup, okay? Yeah, I was going to use my caramelized onions to make, um, french onion soup. Great. I will boil the other potatoes. I just knew this was what I wanted. Yeah, these are great, mom. These are great. Butter, chicken, ooh, I love butter chicken. Rice and veggies, fries look good. Gotta fly to the... Where are you flying off to, Sherri? You flying? You need to tell me. You know, I'm a, a sky goddess. Okay. So...
Where's the first batch?
Well, the first batch is gonna be thrown in for another three minutes, okay? And then you can give it to dad. But they're twice baked, girl. Don't you give me off of my...
I will not.
Okay, thank you. The family. Thank you for the likes and the shares. Um, and I still haven't even done my veggie burger yet. However, I'm going to prepare my veggie burger on my focaccia bread, which is gonna be so delicious. And I'm so excited. So the second batch has just came out and we're gonna let these rest. And I will let the other, the oil heat up for the first batch. And now is when they get really crispy and delicious. Thank you for coming to the live, Sherri. I appreciate you, girl. And everyone's getting to see a little... Maybe you'll understand the positivity because you're seeing the fans. And we do, we laugh a lot. There is a lot of love and support and good food. And, um, this is where I gain my clarity and my hopefulness and just sheer appreciation from life because I do have people that love and care and appreciate about, appreciate me. And anything outside of that has nothing to do with me. Okay, so now I'll put dad's final batch in. Make sure it's nice and hot. And I always change the paper towels out because I don't like it to just sit in the oil. But now they'll get nice and golden and you salt them as soon as they come out. And c'est pièce de résistance. Girl, I got a few things going. But dad's fries are good to go. The next batch will be for you. No, 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 no. His are right here. They have to get nice, golden and crispy, girl. Quit rushing me.
A bird by faith.
You couldn't rush it, me, exactly. Priscilla's sticking around to eat. Okay, so now we have some nice golden fries that are crispy on the outside. They are nice and soft on the inside. And they've been made with love. So I will show you this final. So this is hot. Is the AC on, mom? Yeah, no. No, hush. Thank you, I am pray. I ain't getting out the kitchen. Okay, so here is the first batch. Yeah. The first batch of the fries. They're delicious. Hit them with some salt immediately. You can also put celery salts or celery seed. That tastes good. Thank you.
And thank you, they're gorgeous.
Now that's a good fry. Wow. Next batch of fries? Now those are some great fries. As my mom says. Yeah. That's it right there. That's it right there. Mm-hmm.
Super good.
All it takes is a little extra preparation. Okay. If Mr. Williams likes it... Okay, if Mr. Williams likes it, then it's good with me. And then dad, you can try some of the bread. Okay, so the second batch of fries is going in. I don't mean to ignore you guys. It's just, uh, it's family time right now. Girl, if you don't let me finish these fries, we're talking about your fish sandwich. I will do this fish sandwich. I'm gonna jump off the live and jump back on to complete the veggie burger. Cuz this is way too hot, y'all. This is way too hot. I'm surprised the phone's not melting. So I'm gonna jump off the live to finish these fries and come back on. Uh, it's a bit, there's a lot going on. So and I will show you the fish sandwich I'm gonna make for my mother. I wanna finish these fries and still talk to y'all. Alright? Joy for life. So I will return in like 20 minutes, probably before. However, I close every live with this. Exactly, Bowie. I'm not leaving completely. I'm coming back on, but these whippersnappers is coming from all sides. So I need to realign. Um, and I'll be continuously doing all of these fries cuz now that I'm cooking, people are making requests. So and my focaccia looks great. However, I wanna eat a few fries before I start the rest of my meal. So let me close with this. Three things. Crispy and delicious. Uh, eat good food. I always say, be the reflection of love because we all come from infinite sources of love. Show up. When you show up, make it look good. And, uh, love those who you're around cuz it matters. And I typically say I come on live twice a day. If you miss my live, cuz I don't have any particular time now that I'm traveling, I upload all my lives to my YouTube, which is Hope is Speaking. So you can go there for the daily YouTube TikTok lives and they're there. So I'm gonna come off live and come back on in like 15, 20 minutes. I can't let these fries burn. That's why I'm really getting off. And we will continue to cook. So I will see you shortly. Thank you. And we gonna eat. I'm not gonna eat and I'm not going to finish anything without live seeing it. So hold tight. I'll be back. Ciao.